Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. At seven o'clock. I would like to send. I don't know if it's condolences or best wishes to all the first responders that are responding to fires once again. And welcome Chatea back to High Level. Hopefully they'll get the power up and running soon and families will be able to go home. So I'd like to. Add three point five, thirteen point five, sorry. To the agenda and that is the animal control facility. I don't know if you have that, Jan.
I do not. I, well, I don't think so, but.
Yes, it was emailed.
Okay, I'll have a look. I've got another screen running here, so.
Is there any other additions? Could I have someone move, please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carried. So approval of the minutes of the September 11th meeting? Is there any? Errors? Or questions? If not, could someone move to accept, please? Counsel Lebrun, all in favor, carried. Um, my report was emailed to you. Sorry, I didn't email it to you guys, but I did want to. Give my report verbally. So I wanted to keep you in. Um, first of all, I'd like to administration. Nobody's here but Clark and Jerry. Um, they would like, there was, I got an email from a person that was in the Toronto Airport and they were standing behind a couple who were very excited to be getting home to Yellowknife. He said so his ears perked up and he started listening to them. And they went on to explain what a wonderful experience it was to be in the town of High Level as they left Yellowknife. And that they lodged in our town so that they could get organized and they, they had all that they needed plus gas when they left town, so. They were quite happy with the town of High Level, so I thought I would share that with you. So kudos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we will definitely pass that on.
Um, I, my report, if you haven't read it, September 13th, we had a meeting with Minister Schultz, for those of you that weren't there. We discussed the two landfills. She, she said that she would get back to us regarding that. Um, September 14th, the Deputy Mayor and I were at a Waste Commission meeting and we are having trouble with our soil compactor. So we are looking at a new one. Um, just some other housekeeping things. Uh, boreal housing, um, we set a policy for, for, um, Mackenzie House for lodge tenants in which we are taking applications right now for anybody that wants to be a lodge tenant. And then a policy for the DSL fours. Uh, we have been looking at different lodges um, to see what type of contract we would like to go with. Uh, and then we went on a tour of the subdivisions in Fort Vermilion. And holy moly, it's not going to look the same when those subdivisions are done. Crazy. Um, the last one that I really wanted to talk about was the regional investment workshop that's being held in High Level at the Mirage from ten to tw- uh, ten to two o'clock on October 18th. Um, we're requesting, and I think an invitation was sent to all councilors and to key administration to attend this workshop. Um, it's, uh, it's going to be on investment in our region. And we also have representatives coming from other municipalities and the indigenous community. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend as I am teaching online that day. So hopefully some retired people from council. Um, also, um, we have a, uh, on March 12th to 14th, I'm requesting that council hold a, a date there as we're hosting a business showcase. And this business showcase is going to highlight products that are made here in our region. And there's quite a few products that are being made that we haven't really showcased, so. As lo- as well as, um, uh, people that are coming up to talk and give workshops. So if you could keep those two dates open, that'd be great. And that's my report. Any questions? The invest one on the 12th and 14th is also for any community members that wish to attend. And lunch will be provided. There's an incentive. Could I have someone move my report? Counsel Jessamyn, all in favor, carried.
Aye.
Council reports.
First, Madam Mayor, did you?
Did I?
Get a motion to approve the committee to hold meeting minutes?
Oh, probably not.
Okay. I wasn't there, so I can't.
No, I must have skipped right over it. I moved right to my report so that I could. Okay, so did I get a? Oh, sorry. Uh, the September 18th Committee of Whole Meeting. Uh, could I have a person move those minutes, please? Counsel Anderson, all in favor, carried. So back to council reports. I thought Deputy Mayor was jumping right into his report.
September 13th, I attended the same meeting with Minister Schultz. Uh, September 14th, also the Mackenzie Regional Waste Management Commission meeting. And then September 20th, a ready meeting um, that the mayor's already reported on. One thing I did wanted to highlight is that we were reminded of the premier's acceptance speech where her specific comment was that the province is open for business corner to corner to corner. Um, corner to corner to corner, all four corners. So that perhaps we can utilize that in some of our upcoming meetings um, to just remind them that we're not the forgotten stepchild up here. Um, other than that, nothing to report.
Yes, I always preference my meetings with the premier's side. So that's a good thought. Any questions? Okay, um, on to. What, yeah, what went to my agenda now? What? I know. I was just seeing who, Counsel Anderson.
Uh, September 14th, I attended an IMPC, Intermunicipal Planning Commission meeting. Um, where we approved a subdivision within the county. Um, up by the airport, uh, just a single, uh, family dwelling. Uh, and that's all I have to report on.
Okay. I thought when you said a subdivision, it was a whole whack of houses.
It's a subdivide.
All right, Counsel Jessamyn.
Uh, September 19th, I attended our first uh, Forest Street Canada Capitol, no, Forest Capital Canada Working Committee session in, on September the 19th. That's it for me.
Okay. Counsel Lebrun.
Um, on September 13th, I also attended the meeting with Minister Schultz. Um, and then on September 13th as well, we had the banners of remembrance meeting. So it looks like we've picked up two additional banners this year. Um, and then September 16th, I was in Grand Prairie for the Peace Library Board meeting. And September 18th was the Committee of Whole, that's all I have to report.
Any questions? Thank you. Uh, Counsel Welke, do you have anything?
Sorry, no, uh, no meetings to report this session, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, could I have someone move council reports, please? Counsel, Counselor Anderson, all in favor, carried.
Aye.
So the action list. Could, um, we get an update on the Alberta Advantage Program? When it's going to be, begin? Have we hired someone?
Madam Mayor, the application has gone in under the, that rural renewal stream of the Alberta Advantage Immigration Program. Uh, we have not heard yet back from the government. We have offered the economic development position to three people and been turned down three times. Haley has another interview this week, so. Uh, the, the current candidate has actually just recently moved to town. His wife has taken a job with the Government of Alberta, so he's, he's got good qualifications in economic development, so we're hoping this one we can secure. But we're hoping to, I think Haley was hoping to get something back in October so that we can be ready to start writing letters by the end of November at the latest.
So with this program, do we have to be accepted? I thought we just put our application forward and they said, yep, go for it.
Well, the government has to vet our application and, and actually allow us to participate in the, in the program. There's a number of criteria and that's the ability to welcome individuals, businesses that are looking for jobs and unemployment rate that is a certain level. Um, most of which we qualify for. We might be a little tight on the housing side of things, but of course, we've got the CMHC program that we've also applied for at the same time.
Okay, um, and the other question I have is about the bylaw for, um, 114th or 114th Street, when's that coming for?
Uh, we're just waiting for the final cost on that road.
And my final question, since no one else is asking. CMCH, the, how long will that application be?
Um, I believe Director Gavin felt that those turnarounds are fairly, fairly quick. Uh, they've already started making announcements, uh, so we're hoping we get that within the next month as well. That'll allow some planning over the winter. We already have some interest in it, so.
Interested in single dwellings or?
Uh, there's a bit of interest in multifamily as well as some community housing type, affordable housing type stuff, so.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay, could I have someone move that report then, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carried.
Aye.
Is there any questions about upcoming events? Could I have someone move that, please? Counsel Lebrun, all in favor, carried.
Aye.
The capital status report. I have a question on, oh, sorry. No, I have a question on community park. Um, I guess Janet's not here, but. Um, when, when is this park scheduled to be seeded? I know it was supposed to be done this fall. Is it going to meet that?
Uh, I had spoken with Director Straub a week or so ago and he had talked to the contractor. And there was money to have some topsoil spread in the seeding in this fall. I'll double check with the contractor on that, see where we're at. But that was the hope that we could get it seeded this fall before the snow.
And what is a water wheel?
Oh, so the wa-
Are we getting a dam with a?
Yeah. So it is essentially a sprinkler that walks itself.
Oh, okay.
So you stretch it out and as it sprinkles, it rolls up its hose and walks itself backwards.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
So I'm assuming it's a type of a juxtaposition between the garbage receptacles and the joint wastewater treatment system. I don't think we were getting a, a grant on the garbage receptacles. It says grant refused, working on design with MPE.
Oh.
Um, probably delivery fall of 2023, but with the wastewater treatment system, considering that the grant that we were seeking was for $35,000, um, but the balance of the money was coming from utility reserves? Are we looking forward at, are we looking at moving forward on that just based on utility reserves? Have we appealed the grant application refusal or just it's a pretty important study to have going forward, right?
Uh, we, we, we are in the process of undertaking that study based on council's allocation out of reserves. Um, I'll see if Director Straub had, I, he did not mention putting in another grant. I think he was just, uh, going to try to cover it out of your motion, out of council's motion and get that study done.
Good.
Yeah, and the garbage, oh, that's what I read too. I have a question, why, why will we refuse? Because we passed the motion.
They, they turned, they split the two.
Mm-hmm. Um, and just on that, garbage receptacles, the first 800 showed up. So they were busy today putting wheels on them. Um, so we'll be working with the contractor likely after convention just to see what kind of scheduling we can do because it's, it's going to take a few weeks to get these things out and areas of town using them and collecting any old receptacles people want to get rid of.
Well, I read on, was it on your page, on your page, on the town page that somebody had spent $500 and wondering if they could collect that.
Yeah, that's unfortunate price for garbage cans.
Are we waiting for the contractor to be ready to go with their equipment before we hand these out or?
It, it's a bit of a combination. My understanding is that he had, the contractor has the equipment. It's just the logistics of handing out, well, it's going to be close to 3,000 garbage cans. Um, delivering them, um, and we'll probably have to do it by section of town. So I, I need to talk to the contractor just to see if this is something he can take on and off his truck or whether we're going to have to try to get as much of it out as possible so he can start on the process.
So I'm just thinking if there was an area where these have been rolled out and they're still using the old system, there's no way someone's going to be able to pick one of those up to dump it?
No, they'll, they'll destroy the old can. No, yeah, if they can even pick them up.
Sure.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the logistics will work out. And my understanding is, is that the, um, Director Straub's conversation with the contractors, they were hoping to have this ready to roll before the beginning of November, so.
So do they chip them and everything and match them to their residences or?
Nope, they're chipped and they're serial numbered. So that's, that's the other thing we have to do is as they're delivered, is record the serial numbers and I think that comes into utilities.
Yeah, so we, we can, um, attach the serial numbers to the properties just like we do the AMR codes for each water meter, similar. We'll just create a service code for them.
Yeah, is it completed?
Eight hun-
It says 80%.
And Keith's side of it, the underground side of it, the big part.
Is there any way the manufacturer can give, I guess it wouldn't, I didn't which residence, because those 3,000 serial numbers have to go into the system, right?
Mm-hmm.
What, didn't we get an extension on that?
Yeah, we did.
And it's supposed to be done by the end of September?
Um, that was when our extension war, that was when our end date was, but we did file for an extension for, I think we have six more months, so. Um, but we will be utilizing our asset management system because we do have all of our properties uploaded and all of our tax rolls in our system and utility accounts. So what we'll do is, it is a nice system where we can just, um, upload with an Excel spreadsheet and they can identify duplicates and, and so forth, so it'll be nice that way.
Okay. Any other questions on the capital project sheet? Could I have a? Motion, please? Counsel Jessamyn, all in favor, carried.
Aye.
Uh, on to all business briefing notes. I have some questions about this first briefing, which to Minister Wilson, no, William, sorry. Um, are these still the current date or, is this the current data?
So the most recent data we have are the 2019 health data.
Still?
Yeah. I believe there's a new one coming out, but, uh.
Okay.
I think we were using the 2016 and stuff before that.
And my second question would be, could we ask him if there's, well, we should ask the DNE first, but um, is there any way that we could partner with the DNE on a treatment center?
I, yeah, I, I think that's something we could definitely, uh, broach with the minister. The DNE are pursuing funding for detox. It would be nice to have a treatment center here as well.
So if we have our meeting with him and you guys meet with the minister, perhaps that's something that we can, you know, broach with the DNE. You know, and maybe we should cost share on that. And on the next one, sorry.
The only issue with that is the slippery slope that.
I know.
It's full responsibility.
But we need to un-slippery slope it as much as we can. I mean, we've started with, with transportation. I think we carry on with, um, all departments because money is limited and they can't build a treatment center and us one, so I kind of think it would be good to marry the two.
Hmm, just the, the note here that they're either have or adding 10,000 spaces. That seems like an unrealistic number. Um, you know, to find staff to provide, you know, um, source locations, things like that, but.
Because you need RNs to run that program, don't you?
Depending on what type of program it is.
But you have to be in there while they're detoxing.
Yeah, detox is different than a treatment, so a treatment doesn't necessarily have to have an RN on staff.
Okay.
But they need trained addictions counselors and things like that and, but staff, cooking.
Yeah.
Programming, like, it's not a simple undertaking, but they're looking at that kind of expansion. There's no reason why they're, they couldn't put one up here. But at a provincial cost, not.
No. No, but, um, I, I think the DNE are looking at a detox.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And, and probably a treatment too, because you can't just detox and not have treatment. Anyways, that was just a thought that I had. Um, on the next one, when did we decide to call this a resilience hub?
So that was the terminology used by the government. So that was their resilience hubs for, um, response to natural disasters. So when Michael, when Michael met with you guys at the last meeting, that was one of the things he mentioned in the, in the letters that were being written.
Oh, I must have missed that because I thought we had a name for it.
Oh, no, 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 so the, sorry, Madam Mayor, that, um, it's still the multi-purpose evacuation center. The resilience hub is the community. So they're looking at communities across the province that form those resilience hubs so that it's not just this facility, it would also be the ability to provide healthcare and, uh, uh, support services and that type of stuff.
Oh, because the letter says High Level is planning a multi-purpose facility known as a resilience hub.
Okay, I cut and paste that. I will take a look at that.
And we are not looking at a swimming pool in Curling Lake anymore. We decided field house and arena. And I think we need to put in there the Deputy Mayor's, um, when he said, uh, if we, if the town finds the two thirds, will the province commit to the other third somewhere in there? So when they read this, it's in their face all the time. Well, we've got to be careful. She didn't.
Madam Mayor?
Met.
Well, he said a third, a third, a third.
Yeah. She said, we like to fund projects that are a third, a third, and a third. She didn't say we will. Right?
Yeah.
Yes, Jan.
Um, so I know like over the course of this project, the, sort of the terms have been thrown around as to what funders like to hear, whether it's recreation center, whether it's evacuation center. Now it sounds like resilience hub encompasses everything. Is that the terminology they want to hear? So in that case, do we want to leave all the recreation stuff in there?
Well, we did have the conversation with Minister Schultz where we said we were, we were looking at alternate, um, ways to build this facility to bring the costs down.
Right.
And that we were looking at, uh, field house, evacuation center, and an arena. So she's knowing, she knows that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just, it, it seems like we always have to be careful as to, you know, what we're calling this thing, what we're saying its purposes, um, sort of as a, collectively, um, you know, when we all talk about it, so. Um, I know we've, we've discussed downsizing slightly, but it seems like resilience hub, you know, that is pretty, that is pretty catchy, but that would include every, that would include both aspects.
Yeah, yeah, we, um, I think, I think the idea was High Level would be a resilience hub in the multi-purpose center, if I'm correct. CAO, the multi-purpose center would sort of be the part of it, of that resilient, High Level as a resilience hub. He's going to reword the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea though. I mean, just the fact too, that we have so many hotel rooms, like we are very na- our intra-infra- infrastructure fits the resilience hub model if it means the whole community very well a- and, and with, with all of the, uh, services available at our hospital. So, yeah, I, I don't know, I li- I like the term. Just, I, I just want to make sure we all sort of refer to what we're doing the same way.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, um, what I, what I'll reword that is High Level is planning a multi-purpose evacuation facility as part of a resilience hub when combined with the other services provided by the community.
Yep.
And the one-third is in the very last line on the page.
Did I not read the whole thing?
It's right under, it says industry, government, and commerce, and then the next paragraph has the one-third.
Oh, maybe I never got to the bottom of the page. I thought it was just this one pager.
Well, then the next page is the same as Minister William. What was it, huh?
I can't, couldn't see.
Oh, did it get cut off, maybe? Oh, sorry, the, the very last, so on the first page of Minister Ellis's, um, letter, it says, "The town of High Level needs the support of the provincial and federal governments to deliver this critical piece of emergency infrastructure. We would fund a third of the project locally while looking to Edmonton and Ottawa to provide the rest."
I think we, yeah, that's good, except we should, I like the Deputy Mayor's idea where we, where he says two thirds, we'll look for the other two thirds, don't tell them we're going to go to the, doesn't, we shouldn't have to tell them where we're getting it from because they want to see municipality putting in a third. Oh, did I say that on camera?
Yeah, doesn't matter how we put it in, Madam Mayor, if we can get it from other sources. So we, what you want to say then is, is we need the support of the province and we will source two thirds of the product. Okay. Okay. So I will change that because that's also the same in Minister Guthrie's letter as well.
Any other?
And then we added the K division and all I've done there is just update based on this summer's activity, or what happened this summer.
Yeah. Tell them we'd like to see that R practice. It's a nice term, but.
Yeah.
All right, could I? All right. Could I have someone move the all the briefing notes, please? Or do you just want to accept for information? Okay, all in favor? Carried.
Aye.
Thirteen one is the forestry capital designation.
Counselor Jessamyn asked if that be added to the agenda.
Like I mentioned, we met last week and this came from the tri-council, last tri-council meeting where we all agreed to submit an application and the county had submitted that and we're fortunate to be awarded that that designation. There will be a service in Ottawa here this coming up here, and that's when the official announcement will be made. And then we'll be making that actually announcement over at the AGM at the AFPA. And that's when the year starts for the for the community and the region for the to showcase forestry in the region. So this 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 program has been going on for a very long time and current community is Fredericton, New Brunswick that has it. And it's been a number of years since Alberta's had it. So this is pretty exciting for us to have it. There's an opportunity for an additional year and based on the success of this first year, our meeting last week, there was a lot of productive ideas that came out of it and starting to get a lot of things put in place for us to get up and running. Requirements are there would be an official ceremony, meal, and dignitaries invited to to showcase the award. And there's a website that is required to carry the the logo and the and the designation for the region for the year. And out of that, which came from the tri-council's support from the three municipalities, is a request for $2,000 from each municipality to for seed money to get us started. The website and we're looking for this working committee. We'll be doing newspaper ads and requests and logo contests. So I've already reached out to Rainbow Lake. They have committed to the $2,000. We're looking for $2,000 in municipality and the county has done the same. So I'm requesting that we make a motion to support this with $2,000 in the town high level.
Is there questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
No, I think it's a great idea, but I'm wondering whether administration could arrange for signs at the highway entrances to town recognizing this is the forest capital of Canada for 2024.
I think we've done that before, just attach them to the town at the entrance signs. Yeah, we can. We'll get that priced out, sure.
Shouldn't so should wouldn't we want that to come from the committee or?
We are not the forest capital. We are the forest region.
Like, can still identify that on our local entrance signs. I would think that would come from the town. I don't think that cost would be borne by the committee, but.
Yeah, but I mean, then, so you're saying that we would be recognized with these signs? We'd put them up for the town?
Yeah, recognizing this is the forest, this region is the forest capital or whatever.
Okay. Wouldn't that come from the working committee and the group?
I think.
The working committee is looking at opportunities to showcase this. They're they'll be the ones developing. They're already looking at a number of ways that things will go into communities to recognize each community. So I don't know.
Well, it's an idea that you can take back to the committee, that the town of high level would be willing to put those up at the junction of Highway 35.
Okay, sure.
And if they accept it, then the town of high level will pay it. I don't think we want to overstep the committee and start doing all of our stuff because as a tri-council, we asked for this committee to be struck. So and we volunteered. Mr. Jessamyn didn't make.
I get caught up in it, but.
You weren't there, so we volunteered you.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So could I have a motion from council to support?
I'll move that.
Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, there is no documentation on the next item. We've been having a little fun coordinating two government departments, a property manager and tenants. So we're hoping that we can take a look at the properties in the first week of October. I would suggest the council table this to their committee of the whole in October and hopefully we have information to you then.
Could I have a motion to table this residential property?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Welke, thank you. All in favor? Carried. The Alberta municipality survey.
Madam Mayor, administration's just inquiring if council wanted to appoint a member to work with administration to answer that survey or just let administration work through it themselves.
Council?
Just information on, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Anderson, you're fine with it. Okay, do you want to make a motion, somebody? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, do you have?
Aye.
Do you have our our information?
Yeah, I'm.
Because we don't have all the same stuff as as Caughlin and.
Oh, yeah, no, we would we would answer it from a yeah, from a high level point of view.
Thirteen four, Boreal Housing.
Madam Mayor, municipal clerk brought forward the list of individual, sorry, the list of appointees. We just wanted clarification on the Boreal Housing. I was going to step down as the council's member at large. It's my recommendation that you appoint two counselors like the other municipalities have, and we just wanted to clarify that for the organizational meeting. Did you want us to advertise for another member at large or to put it on as two counselors?
I I would prefer to, I think it's good to have a diverse perspective because council usually has all the same perspective. And I think there's people out in the community that have the qualifications. If we advertise that we can advertise for the qualifications that Boreal Housing wants, like board experience.
The list that the ministry put.
Yeah. And if they don't meet those requirements, then who knows if council meets all those requirements. I don't know, like, how many people here have social housing experience, but we all have some financial perspective. So I think we've always had a community person and I think it's always been good because it's different people in the community. And I think our board should be made up. I don't know. That's my opinion.
I agree that it would be constructive for the board's purposes to have a community member on there. My concern would be if we don't get a qualified person that we just have one representative on there, which probably not a good way to proceed. So can we have a cutoff that if we don't have a qualified candidate by the org meeting in October that we would then appoint a second member of council?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the ads will go out and that will it'll close on all of those committees prior to the organizational meeting. So we'll have an answer for you at that time.
So that only gives us, what, two weeks?
Your organizational.
It's going to be October here.
Your organizational meeting is the 23rd, so we'd have at least two clear weeks in the paper and of course what we can put on the website.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not certain that always having all council members on there is a good thing. And I know Rainbow Lake does it because they don't have a lot of community members. And I don't know why the county does it, but.
And just and just a note, I appreciate council's opportunity to sit on Boreal Housing for the last six years. It's been interesting between McKenzie House and Heimsted and the changes that the government has wrought on social housing. Not some good changes as well, but thank you.
And the floodings and.
Yes. Oh, yes, relocations and new subdivisions and.
Did you want a motion on that?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
If you, yeah.
He made the motion. All in favor? Carried.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about you, Jan. Okay, so the next one on there is the animal control facility.
Madam Mayor, this is submitted by Director Gavin. Director Phillips also gave her a hand with us. This is this is arising out of a conversation we had with the Humane Society earlier in the summer. I think it was during the Fox Lake evacuation about the size of the facility and its adequacy going forward, especially in light of some of the changes that we've made to the animal control bylaw regarding cats. But they're also finding that they are collecting other animals and often are quite full. In fact, right now there is no room to put any new animals in the shelter. What Director Gavin is asking for is to real to reallocate $10,000 out of planning and development into animal control to develop some concept plans for either relocating or for extending the current building.
So we did commit up to 10,000. So she's looking for another 10,000?
No, she's just looking to re to transfer those funds from her subdivision to the animal from one budget department to the next.
She had put in 10,000 to redo the municipal development plan. So she's just asking to reallocate that to animal control.
Council, questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Sorry, question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sorry, Jan, I didn't see your hand.
Oh, I just spoke out. $10,000 just to come up with a plan of how to expand? Am I hearing that correctly?
It's it's actually $8,000. The and that's to redevelop a number of floor plans, review them with the society, and then bring them to council for a final choice on the final option.
So that's that's with an architect then or how like $10,000?
You were thinking.
I know things are expensive. Yeah, I know things are expensive, but if they needed to add on to their building, does it cost $10,000 to figure that out?
You're you're having to build this to code because of the nature of the building. It's a public building. It's housing housing animals and staff. Yeah.
It's a municipality, Jan.
I know.
Everything's expensive. Now, if we were just building a greenery, it would be cheap.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, I'll make that motion.
I think somebody already did.
Did they?
Oh, no, nobody did. Sorry, Jan. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make the motion to apply the $10,000 to that purpose.
Thank you. All in favor? Karen, just a question. Is that facility totally run by volunteers?
No, they the society does pay its staff.
Oh, because I was there three times last week and there was it wasn't open.
Oh, okay. They do have a, I believe she's semi-full time. She's a full-time staff. I'm not sure what her daily hours are. And then they have they have staff to go in in the evening for a couple of hours and clean up pens and.
Yeah, well, I was there at 3:30 trying to adopt a cat. I don't.
Actually, we had something go through our maintenance manager today about somebody who has some kittens they're trying to move.
We can definitely bring up that service request for you. But they do.
Is it orange?
They do have a schedule. I know that in the summer they do have grants for summer students to come on. I believe it's through the Canada, the same grant that the library gets for their summer staff.
Just be step, yeah.
Yeah, well, it was posted on the website that it was open until 5 o'clock every day. So that's why we went.
Question, maybe administration can follow up. In terms of their capacity to hold animals, they're still taking animals from outside this region, are they not?
That's a good question. I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I know they take animals that we collect, animals at large in the community.
I had a former staff member from Peace River who sent me an email a while ago saying that they were on their way to high level with five dogs that they had been fostering and they were dropping them at the center here.
Were they fostering for this humane society?
We were fostering them in Peace River and we're bringing them up to high level looking to find out if I was looking for a dog, which I wasn't. So I just I was surprised that given the capacity issues that they've had here, maybe they already had homes for these. I don't know, but they were bringing five puppies from Peace River.
But we have asked the Humane Society to sit down and review the policies in light of the changes to the animal control bylaws. So I know they have some concerns. They do not want to be a kill facility. And they're also worried, again, capacity is an issue. But I do believe that there are some animals there that have been waiting adoption for quite some time.
Okay, so could I have someone move correspondence for information for information if there's nothing to pull out of there? Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carried.
Aye.
So that ends our public portion of our meeting. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending.